Good afternoon, everyone. Glad to see so many people here, so many smiling faces. We're gonna have probably not a long work session, but this time I'd like to call the work session to order, the October 21st, 2021 work session to order. And I want to turn it over to Dr. Matt Blutes.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is gonna be a very informative meeting for everyone as we have the opportunity. As you recall, we commissioned a 10-year facility study, which I think Mr. Wright is really gonna refer to more as a five-year guide, but with 10 years attached to it. And we also commissioned the OREB group through North Carolina State to take a look at our population growth and how that's gonna affect our schools. And of course, this work's gonna guide us moving forward along with our county commissioners to ensure that we provide the facilities needed for the students in our county. So to that end, I am going to turn the presentation over to Mr. Thomas Dudley and Mr. Jerry Carlson for NC State and OREB to kinda walk us through. They're gonna take us through the study. And feel free to ask questions as needed. Are you comfortable with that?
Absolutely.
Okay. Feel free to ask questions as needed. And I think their information is... Some of it's like, we're spot on with some of what we put in place right now with the expansion projects and the land, the elementary school moving that forward. But it also, we definitely have work that we have to prepare for. On that end, you guys are on.
Thank you very much. See, so, Jerry, I've heard of Thomas Dudley before Ed. As you should continue to mention, I'm joined today by my colleague, Mr. Terry Carlson. And this afternoon, we're going to be presenting your membership forecast looking forward out over the next 10 years. If you have to click right here, let's see. It was on full screen. I know we had to pull up Jamie's information too, but I think if we... Perfect, there we go. Thank you. So briefly here, we have just shared the outline, talked a little bit about our organization because it's been really over 10 years since we worked together as organizations. From there, I'll be handing over to Mr. Carlson, who will be talking about the land use study, including the process that he's gone through and the results from that. Then he'll hand it back over to me, and I'll be discussing your membership forecast, including the school-level forecast, what we call the out-of-capacity table. So a little bit about us. NC State works great. We're on Centennial Campus in Raleigh. You can also call us FOR Ed. And we're part of the Institute for Transportation, Research and Education, or ITRU for short, which has been conducting transportation research, training, and technical services in North Carolina for over 40 years within this space. So our little portion of ITRU is called FOR Ed. We're an unbiased, third-party evaluation research group that really strives to de-blithes the school planning process. Summarizing the second paragraph there, really what that means is we focus these conversations on data. Data and analysis really round everything in that foundation. If you'd like to learn more about us, we have the link to our site there. Speaking specifically to the services that we offer, they all fit under this broader term of IPSAK or Integrated Planning for Schools and Communities. And what that means is that school planning should not exist off on an island somewhere in the vacuum, totally independent of what's going on in the planning community at large. And so when it comes to new residential developments, coming out of a lot of things like that, that needs to be an integral part of school planning. And there's some of the deliverables that we produce, land use studies, including GIS analysis, and so the list goes on. And we've had the privilege to work with quite a few districts over the history of the program. I know it's small, a privacy there, but again, I think the last time I worked with you all was 2009, 2010. And with that, for right now, I'll hand it over to my colleague, Mr. Carlson.
All right, thank you. As Thomas mentioned, my name is Terry Carlson. Obviously with FOR Ed, and I'm the land use planner for Ed, so that means I just conducted the land use study portion of this project. I'm just here to say to kind of discuss my findings with you all and discuss my key takeaways from that portion of the project. I wanna start off here with the interview also, what you have in front of you. This is really mainly used as a guide for us and for me specifically to go throughout the county and identify the key stakeholders that we wanna get ahold of. That can either help us identify residential developments or other characteristics going on in the county such as economic development, water, and sewer and transportation. So just gonna kinda quickly skim through this. Looking up at the top there, we have Ms. Lori Lozner. Am I pronouncing that correctly? She's a county planning director. So we spoke with her and her team to obtain the residential development information throughout the county. I have to pause here just for a minute and give Lori and her team so much credit for her willingness to assist us. I can say with pretty great confidence that she was probably one of the better planning departments that I've spoken with in the past, upwards of two years throughout the state of North Carolina. Her data and organization and knowledge of what's going on in the county as well as her team was next to none. So I really appreciate her contributions as ever. And like I said, just wanted to take a moment and just say you guys got a great planning department here, without a doubt. Moving on down, we can see Mr. David Oss. He's with North Carolina Department of Transportation. Just wanted to reach out to him to understand future transportation projects in the county, maybe where some issues are currently and how they plan to address that. And then with Larry Lombardi, obviously, he currently talks county economic development. Again, just wanted to touch base with him to learn about future industrial developments and commercial developments of things of that nature. And obviously, you can see a pattern here with Mr. Will Rumsey. We wanted to reach out to him to learn about Currituck's water and sewer infrastructure and what the future might look like as far as that and how that impacts the enrollment in Currituck County. So this line is really meant to kinda show my key takeaways of growth factors occurring in Currituck County. And obviously, there's other factors here, but these are some of the bigger ones that I wanted to show today. Looking at that top bullet point, it's kind of a broad spectrum bullet point as far as geography of Currituck County. With that, during several meetings, we identified since, or prior to 2017 to 2018, there's relatively high retiree migration coming into Currituck County. Obviously, that's kind of related to your positioning in the state, being close to the coast and things of that nature. And that was something that was certainly identified through a few interviews. Going on down, we have the Justice District of Norfolk and the Hampton Roads area more broadly, Virginia. That's certainly identified as a growing area of Virginia. And then obviously, with the growth that you're seeing in Currituck County, some of those folks are starting to trickle down to Currituck and more specifically, the Moayak area. And then lastly there, as I'm sure you're all aware, you have plenty of seasonal visitors and tourism coming to your county during the summer months and things of that nature, which can also affect some of the population numbers and fluctuate throughout the year. Going on down there to that second larger point, again, speaking to industrial and commercial development throughout the county. One of the highlights here, the Currituck Station development, or, I'm sorry, Currituck Station development occurring in the northern part of the county near Moayak, that's really intended to be a mixed-use kind of commercial, industrial, office, residential, really work-play kind of classic mixed-use center, which is really interesting. We've seen a lot of success with those types of development in other parts of the state, specifically if anybody's familiar with Raleigh area, the RTP Center over there is a huge success. So it's really, it's gonna be really interesting to see how that develops in Currituck County and what that brings to this area. A second point that I wanted to highlight here that we saw throughout a few interviews was the high number of employment outflow. So what that means is you guys just have a lot of people living in Currituck County and residing here, but they either travel to other counties in North Carolina or go up to that Hampton Roads area for employment. So this is something that we noticed. And again, just kinda wanted to bring it up as another kind of key takeaway that came up through a few interviews. Here we kinda get into the meat of the project. So this is the development inventory of what we're looking at here. And typically speaking, I usually include the top 25 developments occurring in a project's district. However, with Currituck County, we only have 25 residential projects that we identified through this process. So this is all 25 developments that we identified. So what you see here is what it looks like. I'm not hiding anything. These are all the products that we collected through our interviews. So I'm sure you all might be familiar with a few of these. Just kinda wanna, again, skim through this and kinda go through what it really means here. Over on the left, we obviously have the development name. Again, I'm sure somebody here is familiar with some of those names. Moving over to the right, we have a number of lots. The way this chart is organized, it's organized with the largest number of development, or lots, down to the smallest. And then you can see that there's acres there and then the estimated build-out here, which is obviously vitally important for our forecasting ability to determine how quickly some of these developments are gonna be built out. And then therefore, when students are gonna come to them. Do you wanna touch on a small note down there? We were made aware of a new project called Flora subdivision that was identified in the county. That was identified after we were finished with this process. That development did not make it into this process, but we did wanna at least take a note that we acknowledged that as something that's coming online. And then here, we're rounding out to my kind of favorite portion of the project, where we can start to take all the development and data that I collected in the previous slide and really put it into a geospatial atmosphere and kinda look at the spatial distribution of developments. And that was a little bit hard to see, but over there on the right, you can see the development map that I made. And again, it's a little bit tricky to see, but a lot of the green, kind of polygonic dots, so to speak, are up in that northern portion, north of Barco, near Moayak, which again, is probably no surprise to many of you. It's certainly a popular area right now. And again, with this, I just kinda wanted to show a few statistics and numbers that I've collected throughout this process over there on the left. So the total number of lots and/or units since 2017 that have been approved or expected within the county is about 1,800. Of that, if we look at the number of units or lots that have been already developed and we take those out from that 1,800, that's that second bullet point that we get there, which is remaining units for development, which is 1,265. So again, that's, you know, accounting for the units in those developments that have already been developed, so that you're remaining development units, so to speak. But again, that second kind of sub-point there, 1,079 of that 1,200 units are all north of Barco. So that, again, that kinda helps show the spatial distribution of where a lot of your developments are going. The third bullet point there, three out of the 25 developments contain 100 or more lots. So that's what I consider to be large-scale development anywhere in North Carolina. Really, to me, if it's over 100 lots, that's a pretty sizable development, regardless of what the district or population is. That's something that's gonna move the needle pretty heavily and bring a lot of students to the area. So again, you have three of those. However, the interesting thing that I found about that is of the 1,200 lots that are still developed, those three developments account for 854 of those 1,200 lots, which in total equals about 68% of the development units. So again, I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers away, but it really kinda helps paint the picture of what style of development you guys are seeing in Currituck County. So again, that's kinda painting the picture that a lot of your remaining development units are in those three developments that consist of 100 lots or more.
You did say this doesn't include the Flora.
That's correct. That's correct.
Does it have to be over 100?
Yep, yep. And then moving on down there, the last bullet point, 23 out of the 25 developments are expected to be completed by 2025. So this just kinda helps us paint a picture of the timeline and the pace of development that you all are seeing in Currituck County. So again, I would argue that in the next handful of years, you know, 23 to 25 years of developments are being completed at a relatively quick pace of development that you're seeing. Then again, of that, that encompasses about 731 of those 1,200 developed lots, which is 58% of the developed lots of that 1,200 number. So about, you know, more than 50% of that remaining developed lots are being, planning on being completed by the next handful of years, which again, really helps us paint a picture of what the timeline, pace of development looks like here in Currituck County. So this one is just concluded my portion of the project. I know I threw out a lot of maps and data and numbers at you guys, so if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. If not, I'll turn it back to Thomas.
Yeah, no other questions. Do you think that these are gonna build out as fast as what, you know, you mentioned because of the lack of building materials and stuff? Do you think that'll slow the building?
I can speak to that only from working with other districts that I've even worked with in the past year and a half. And I have little evidence to show you all today that development, pace of development has slowed down due to building materials. It's not something I've been aware of. It's not seen to be an issue. People have certainly acknowledged the cost that building materials have gone up, but it's...
No, it's that down to where it was before.
I believe so, yeah.
It's that down now is the time if you're gonna build because you can get the lumber in that you need. It's surplus right now. It's below pricing, you know, when we had the huge increase. Right now, it's below.
Right, yeah.
I had a question. You indicated that, you know, we were seeing a lot of retiree migration. But on page 10, that chart shows that ages 65 and older was actually one of the smaller groups.
Sure. I believe that chart goes out to 2019.
It does.
The retiree migration that was specifically talked about was came up in a conversation with the planning department. That was really a trend that was...
How's the fair font?
Between 2017 to 2018, that was prior growth that you guys have. Since 2017, 2018, I think it's arguable that we've seen a shift to a more younger population, again, coming from the Hampton Roads area of Virginia. It's kinda what we've developed here, seeing trends that moves. Does that help?
This chart was 2010 to 2019.
Right, right.
Do you know, with being in close contact with the planning department, do you know the reason we don't see growth on the southern end of the county? Or all the growth is, the majority is in Moayak? Is there a reason or anything that you see why that's not happening, growth on the southern end?
Sure. I can think of three factors off the top of my head. And again, this is just information that I collected from the interviews a few months back. I mean, if we simply look at the spatial geography of Currituck County here, obviously, the southern portion of the county gets very thin. And then if you go eastwardly, it's gonna get towards expensive coastal towns. So you're not gonna see large-scale development, certainly on the coast. And then on that southern portion, like I said, the same point that I just made about the geographic nature of the county, but in the same sense, it was also identified with the Economic Development Director. There tends to be a little bit more warehouse and industrial space in that southern portion. So I think, and again, I'm gonna reach out to my third point here, that between all those, and then again, the Hampton Roads area of Virginia, I think all those three points are just really kinda pulling all your development towards that Moayak area. I think, again, due to the nature of the county and as far as geography, the coast, things of that nature. And then again, what's going on in Hampton Roads is really just kinda pointing all fingers towards Moayak.
Living in Moayak, you can be in Hampton Roads in less than 30 minutes.
Exactly.
And I think a lot of people like live in North Carolina, in say, Moayak. But then, like you mentioned, a lot of people commute and work in Norfolk, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake.
Yes, ma'am.
So I mean, I definitely understand why the...
But I'm just surprised that we're not being able to capture that tax basis from businesses in Moayak. We're approving all the residential development. And even though the mixed development is going in, they're spending their money in Chesapeake. They're not spending their money in our county. And that's what we need. We need a stronger tax base, and we're not getting that. We keep approving subdivisions, but we're not getting the benefit of the tax base to offset the growth.
I'm not sure if you're starting...
Oh, yeah. It's, that's what I don't understand. But I would think that you receive, like when you cross the line and you go to Edinburgh, you know, that's almost a community within itself right there after the Moayak line. You'll see a Target, you'll see a Home Depot, Walmart. So a lot of them will stop there before even coming home to their home neighborhood.
Right.
And if we're shifting to that, say, 25 to 40 age group with children, you're right, they like that, the Target, the Perry Teeter, all of those right, and, you know, the Walmart right there. So...
Well, people...
Oh, people.
One of my grass.
Part of it.
Low maintenance, smaller lots.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, what was the cutoff date for the... The date that you use? Like, FOST is not on, FLOR is not on here. So...
I thought FOST was.
FOST is FLOR.
FOST is FLOR.
No, no, no.
FOST is on there.
Their brother is not.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, real scary, real scary. Can't even word that.
The cutoff date is pretty much when we conducted the interview with Lori and her team, which I believe was around, if my memory is certainly correct, late April. So everything is pretty much relevant up until that point. And again, FLOR might have come around after that. That's probably the reason it does.
Because it was several developments approved. That's how you... But I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. There's been developments approved since.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then you also will support... Do we, are we gonna put this up? Mr. Charlie, you guys have that part in?
Is it important? So it's in the presentation, yes. I should show it. We're still...
Yay.
We interrupted all. Go ahead. We just have lots of questions. The wheels were spinning.
So thank you, Mr. Carlson. The next sort of data input in addition to the residential development that Mr. Carlson outlined is residential efforts. And that's a critical factor in any demographic forecast, especially if you have a demographic forecast that's working with, or trying to predict student enrollment. And of course, this is important because these become your indicators by years from now, or a large share of them do. And then the size of those cohorts work their way all the way through the system. And when those serious stability, or actually remarkable stability, where your most recent data was actually just one resident library away from where it was six years ago. And 2020 data has not come out yet. The state's Sarah Phelps.
Got it.
So that's the report we're looking at. So let's see. The next input that we've taken into consideration is the portion of membership. And not just the numbers, but the numbers behind the numbers to really dig into this and look at the school level and also the grade level as well. But you can see here, no surprise back over the last six years for the growth of 400 students within the district. Just to make this... These days, we always like to be very transparent about the assumptions that we make related to COVID-19, especially in the last year and a half or so. We've really tried to note these particular items. First of all, residential development has not slowed down. We've got a, there will be a decline in resident libraries in the data for 2021. We've got COVID being a public health issue as well as an economic issue that we feel very comfortable, very comfortable with, very confident in. But overall, the forecasts that you're going to see assumes are returning to the new normal that we're assuming that haven't already happened. So aside from the birth rate decline. And as a general disclaimer, there's no minor precedent for modeling the effects of COVID-19. So that brings us to your membership forecast. When you're looking at the school level, of course, it's been a moment here, but I wanted to just highlight, looking at the level shift here. So looking at that top line, that's your elementary school, K through 5 enrollment, both, you know, historically and then looking forward over the next 10 years. And what you'll notice is growth at each of these levels. And it's really propelled, maybe that's the best word for it, by that growth of younger families, with the younger students at the elementary level. And then as those students continue to move in at the upper levels and age up from elementary as well. So this is, just for me, I always find these charts interesting to see exactly how things are shifting within the district and how much growth is truly going to occur. Next, we have the out-of-capacity capable of school level forecast, which is one of our main variables. It's something that we really value because it's a quick visual way to see where your facility needs are and where they will be in the future. The coloring tends to grab people's attention, and that's utilization. So in other words, it's just membership divided by the capacity of the school. So if you see a school that's red, you've got student enrollment or projected membership that is exceeding the capacity of the school by more than 5% over the capacity of the school. So working our way just left to right quickly here, we've got the name of the school. We have the capacity of the school. Your most recent count of how many students are in the school. And then our forecast of membership numbers going out for 10 years. Common criticism you hear from boards across the state is, yes, there's no redder than red on these charts, which is certainly the case when you have schools that have elementary, you know, over 5% beyond its capacity right now. And then it gets up to, you know, over 900 students if nothing were to be done. So with that, I'd like to just leave this up. We have time, I believe, for questions. And so I'd just like to hopefully sort of open it up for questions or discussion.
This doesn't take into account the additions we're putting on Moayak Elementary and Moayak Pedal, right?
That's right. So that would be something that, you know, we could show differently in a different table. But yes, it does not take those additions into account as far as the coloring of the tables.
So Matt, how many, what is the number that we're gonna increase capacity by at Moayak Elementary?
We were shooting for 750, but it's going to be 770.
Okay, so it's not about 150?
Yes. What's the new elementary is built, when you divide those up across Charboro, each one's by 550 to 600 range?
How many students with the new elementary?
750 will be the target.
I'm really expecting to see more with all the new subdivisions coming up. I expect more students.
It looks like we need to change our predictors per lot because like we used to have, was it .25 elementary students per lot? And if we're going to increase that much, it looks like we may have to change our predictors.
Is that how, how do you arrive at that, how many students? Is it so many per lot?
Yes, so that is certainly a good question. It's something I would like to talk through a little bit. So the, you know, sort of baseline modeling, you see the pushes out, the enrollment is based on cohort survival ratios looking at the school level. And based on the additional information that came from Terry and the Landy study, that's where we apply what we call SDRs, or student generation rates, which is exactly the type of number that we're talking about here. You know, .25 students per, per lot. You know, for your district, we're talking about for the types of developments that are going in now. It may sound low, but it's in the neighborhood of .4, .5 students per lot and K through 12 students. And of course, you have some retirees moving in. You have folks who have children that are below that cutoff age and such, but that's a consistent number.
Did our numbers from this current year factor into any of this? Because I think we typically have an input that was given this year. It was like higher than normal, right? When the school opened?
When you hear around, yeah, there's always more kids on the rolls. These are the, these are, was it, these are almost the same as where we're at right now. But the initial, like Moyoc Elementary, I think at one time had over 700.
Yeah, because we start earlier and our neighboring Virginia starts after Labor Day, so a lot of requests don't get made.
So this study was done through 2019, and I'm hearing a lot of folks in real estate who's been in real estate for a long time say that 20 and 21, they've seen more growth than ever before. But those two years haven't been considered in this.
So there's a distinction between, I know we've got a lot of balls that we're trying to develop at the same time here. So that, Mr. Carlson, help me out here with the critical factor.
The, the 2019 number that you're referencing, that was strictly for the population estimates that I had through the census, and 2019 was the latest year I could grab for population estimates. So all the data that you're seeing collected as far as residential development data and things that Thomas has done is up to, I believe, 20, 21.
Correct. So these 21, 22 enrollment numbers and then augmented by the up through about May of this year, residential development data.
The 675 prediction for Moyoc Elementary, not prediction, the number that we are landed on, that is, the formula is that they use a planning department, it's remarkably accurate. This land, that's probably have just the right amount of space. We can argue that we don't have the right amount, but we have just the right amount of space in that building, and we predicted right around that number. And so when I look at this, I go, okay, that's, it's very, I consider highly reliable in terms of the planning because they base it off the lots and so on. So we saw that number, I shared it with Ben when it came in, and that's how we had kind of said, hey, we need this trailer, and we need to move a dismodular unit and head in that direction. Same with Charboro.
I just look at like Charboro, this year 612, and we're only predicting 18 more children there for next year.
That's, sure, yes, that's accurate. And I checked the planning department and asked, how many kids are they predicting coming into the building next year? I think it's 36 more than, than this year. Because in terms of planning, I needed to pay attention because we cannot add anything more to Charboro due to the septic issues. So they're, they're pretty much tapped out. That's why it's so important that we keep things moving along and get that new elementary school built. We run, that's a part that doesn't come up in the study is the septic issues that we have across, we did mention, we have drainage and septic issues across the county.
And I think again, the concentration of those developments are in that Moyoc boundary, even more so than the Charboro. Of course, we live right on that line, you know, still that those developments right there are still in the Moyoc region. So while, you know, it feels like it's Moyoc, we consider Charboro a part of Moyoc, it's really all heavily concentrated in that Moyoc.
I think that false development though is going to affect Charboro.
It, it does.
And, and then even the projected number for Moyoc Elementary, 75 more kids. I don't know, there's a lot of houses going up, but we shall see.
New elementary school supposed to be online in what, 2025?
2025. And they also, part of the work with, with us go through the studies, they will help us at that point in time with re-districting. And to hear that from someone who has the expertise, I was like, this is, this is great because that's quite tough, but that's going to be challenging.
Just to say, now I find it interesting, County Board of Education is the largest employer in the county.
I could spend that wife for a good long time.
I don't think people realize that.
I do want to point out also that the numbers in the 10-day count that they use, starting with Central 244, this is what they get from DPI. This does not include preschool.
We have, what, two classes? Two rooms or three rooms there?
About 30, 27 kids at Central.
But we're utilizing three of those rooms, aren't we?
One, two, three, three classrooms.
Three classrooms.
And you see the note that's on here too, that capacity shown do not remove space dedicated to pre-K or EC classrooms where the K3.
Even EC classrooms?
It's, they, there's an understanding in, Jimmy, I think we'll speak to this perhaps a little bit more, but the EC classrooms, for when certain studies are done, they count just square footage, not what the classroom is used for. So thus that note that's on there, I think that's important for both this board and also for the commission.
So this is a 10-year study of projection. So when the new elementary school gets built, will we kind of have this reevaluated and new numbers put out or, or new projections? Because I mean, the new school will be factored in there, which will help, of course, you know, Moyoc Elementary. I mean, well, it's going to kind of shift, so a lot of these numbers maybe won't be so red?
Yeah, because once the, the, once the additions are done, so the capacity number's going to change from Moyoc Elementary, and then the new build, that'll add in, and then we'll, we'll re-district and revisit the numbers again.
Something will have to be done with Char, Charstan.
Not immediately, but.
But we'll have the capacity to build on there, and we have the capacity to move.
Right, that, that can have an addition, that can also see a boundary line shift.
Real easy, yeah.
At this point.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you so much for being here. I really appreciate it. A lot of valuable, valuable information. Does anybody have questions? Y'all, y'all are in schools every day, some of our teachers and staff, I mean, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask? Okay, all right, thank you.
Jimmy, ready? We'll move on to the 10-year facility study, and I think I have mentioned, I did mention already that a lot of the work is projected out of five years. It's a 10-year, but things need to be revisited.
Yes.
And we kind of ran into that with the initial for the extensions on the elementary school and the middle school. Well, that was based on a 2011 projection. And of course, when the bids come in, the price tag comes in, it's going to be substantially more than.
Well, definitely five years because, like you said, we don't even have the floor and parcel.
And others.
And others, but small, but others that are popping up all over.
I would like to see that, though, after, after the new additions and they get completed, if we could kind of update it at that point, that would be really helpful information because that would be very accurate at that time of today.
Because this won't be valid anymore once we do that. Once we get the new schools, this.
No, not the new school, the additions.
The new school is not until 25. Right, but the additions.
The additions.
Will change everything.
It'll change, it'll change it, just the Moyoc, the Moyoc numbers now, but, but I don't know how much work is involved in doing that, but.
We'll reach out.
We may, we may see if we can get that.
Once the additions are done, I'll reach back out to the guys and talk to them, see if we can take care of it.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I also want to point out that Matt has worked extensively with both of these groups to make sure that they got the information they needed along with his team.
It's, I'm, thank y'all because this is amazing. I can't even imagine what is my.
I'm Jimmy Hyde, we're Hyde Associates, we're a school owner, so what we've done is, for our whole study is made you some maps. We made you some maps of the school sites that you had, we made you some maps of the floor plans, and we go through those with, with our staff and engineers and done some inspections, and we spent quite a bit of time with Matt and his folks to talk about what they know is wrong with the schools, what needs fixing, what some of the deferred maintenance that needs to be, that needs to be added up and calculated. And so what we've tried to do is give you a couple of books. Either one with the maps and that's the information about capacities. It has some initial information that gives Matt and his folks information about where their utilities are, where the costs of this are for the electric and the water and certain things that he wanted to see on this map so that he can use these as, as a tool for, for him and his staff, not just to study about, about what you have and what the cost to fix and things that are wrong. Second book, we'll go to this first, but the second book has to do with a cost assessment of one of the specific items in each one of the schools that need to be addressed and assign a reasonable cost estimate, a probable cost estimate of what it would cost. And that second manual also has some information that Matt directed as far as, you know, which of these things do you consider to be immediate and, and you don't like that. Which of these are priority one and a priority two? So you could actually assign, well, in the next two years, we want, you can spread them out, you can move them back and forth a little bit, and look at the totals amongst the all buildings in the district, what is the cost of this immediate stuff, priority one, priority two. So those are things that, that you can change within the document, or we can change it for you. To give you an idea about what is the total of repairs that are needed that we identified district-wide. And let's, don't get ahead of ourselves, we'll go through this. I won't spend a lot of time on, on any of these single school, but I just want to show you what's in the manual. We've got some copies for you that, that you can, that you can have.
Put in the middle button.
Middle button. So again, here's a map, and we, we, we hypolo, these PDFs so that they're easy to go through and get back to the index. The blue dots are the elementaries, the red are the middle, and the yellow are the high This is a sheet that gives information about what the spaces in the schools, each of the schools is used for, how many, how many first grade, how many EC in high school, how many teaching spaces. Capacities are calculated a little bit differently in high school. It's not, middle school, it's, it's the classroom, this is the regular classroom, they all count art, they all count music. But in high school, each teaching space is assigned a number. So as you go through these, you'll, you'll be able to pick up on how we did that. It's, we simply multiply the number of third-grade classrooms by the number that are there at that school that were identified by the principal, and the DPI, DPI gives us a capacity. Now, this is straight DPI numbers. They don't take into account any factor that would be typical in the district. It's very difficult to fill a school with a calculated capacity just because of the way kids come in and out. So just keep in mind that what we've done here does not have a factor on it. It's a straight calculation based on DPI allocations and number of classrooms per grade that were assigned on the, on the plan and true. This chart also indicates what, in our opinion, is the expansion capacity of each campus. So whereas one campus, gosh, we can't really add anything here, another campus, yes, there's room to add. And so we've estimated a number of classrooms that could be added to each campus to increase its capacity, similar to what you're doing with the fourth grade with the mail. So then that gives us a maximum capacity based on adding four classrooms or six classrooms or eight classrooms. And that's, it's too small to see, but does, does that make sense so far? So then we simply followed up. These are things that Matt and his crew will appreciate in time to come. These are the specific things, utilities, underground pipes and wires that we've shown on the plans for maintenance purposes. So each school, you got a picture, and you got a site map with all those utility flags that, that you see. And then there's a floor plan sheet. The floor plan sheet shows the designation of what each of the rooms is used for. And you can read or copy what, but you can't read or screen what that says. Knox Island. Of course, the second floor is showing, it's blended off to the right-hand side. Carrot Town High. Second floor plan. J and M. I think that's it for that one. Any questions? If not, I'll go to the second one. So we've listed the schools over on the right-hand side, and on the left-hand side, I apologize, it's really hard to read, it's just barely making out, but this is a recap sheet which shows total cost of repairs and improvements that need to be made in our estimation for the elementaries, for the two middle schools and the two high schools. And we've got a total for all the schools of roughly $51 million.
Over what period of time was that, sir? Over what period of time did these?
Those are, those are current costs. Those are current costs.
So those are repairs that need to be done right now?
But those are.
Well, those, those are all the repairs that we feel like are necessary right there.
But we're incorporating.
Do you have to do it right now or not? You don't have to do it.
We're incorporating those with renovations, correct, for, for two of the schools?
Well, yes, this is in addition to.
Oh, really?
To the renovations. Well, no, I mean, we, I mean, if you look at it, we ended up with just additions on the two northern schools because the budgets were so tight, they couldn't add any renovations. So this is an addition to the additions.
Would you mention at the beginning that you had things that were either like priority one, priority two? Is the priority one and priority two all in the $50 million?
Yes.
Everything is in there.
There were some that were listed as immediate, correct, Jimmy?
That's correct.
Immediate concerns priority one, concerned priority two.
And you did say we're going to get copies of both of these booklets, right?
I brought them with me, yes.
Yes, yes.
I think it's crossway, a lot of information that can't read.
It's okay.
We can go through it and.
Okay.
Questions, I don't know.
Thank you.
So that's the total. So the next sheet. You know, we're, we're also dealing with overall summary, right? And so here's where we separate priorities. The green pie chart is immediate needs, and I have to say, you know, I leaned heavily on Matt to tell me, you know, what are these things you really have to have to do right there, or not much, not even 1%. You can't even see it in that green pie chart. And then we determined together what we felt like the priority one needs. And that's the majority of the green pie, about 34 of it, and about 1/4 of it is identified as priority two. Obviously, there can be a lot of discussion about which specific item needs to be in priority. And again, those can be, those can be presented having. But they're all accounted for, and that's the point. We also like to classify what kind of improvement it is or what kind of repair it is, and pie chart at bottom gives, the yellow is site repairs, like parking lots and drainage and a sewage treatment situation. To the right of the yellow is blue, that's a learning environment, that's inside a classroom that's made of carpet or paint. The big orange area is energy efficiency and building envelope. Those are things like windows and roofs, and that's where most of the money, the majority of the money is, is in getting the building protection and ceiling. And then the gray pie, piece of pie there is security and accessibility. That's improvements to security and accessibility for the safety. The bar charts or the tall charts on the left-hand side is simply a different representation of those things. It gives, you know, the totals of immediate priority one and priority two and how they break down as far as how to classify it. So immediate needs in the chart at the top is $31,000 out of that total. Priority one is 38 million, priority two is about 12 and a half million. Any questions about that? Just kind of recap everything.
Yeah, you said, you said 38,000, then you said 38 million.
I'm sorry, 38 million. I'm sorry, thirty-eight million is priority one. And a big jump is when you need it in priority one, thirty-eight million and twelve and a half million.
I'm really surprised at this.
Me too.
I didn't think we'd need this many repairs, but.
The last thing, the last time we had the study done, it looked very similar in terms of what, they capture everything. And we get one point, basically a million dollars to work with, supplement with lottery funds and then we use this to plan out. You'll see the roofs are a big one on these in terms of the high school roof, Jarvisburg, Charvera. It's why it's so important when we build a new building that the construction is top notch. Because we don't have the problems of middle school that we have with other buildings, because it was, it's done a little better. Now Bruce, we're going to get the full life out of that roof and we're not getting any more here of that life out of Charvera and Jarvisburg.
And on that roof, we're at the end of the slide, so I can see within the next five years I have to do that. But unfortunately, probably need to do Jarvisburg and Charvera first. Trying to occur to a higher school, occur to a middle one, so I can get on to the newer schools that should, should have lasted long.
Wait here, when was Jarvisburg, that's really good.
Yes, yes.
That's when the, that was required.
Eighty percent. Yes, that's when we came here.
That's kind of shocking. I mean, that's the state was not following. That's, that one's been there forever.
If, if you walk around these schools at a glance as an observer, you don't see the things that these guys saw and my guys see every day. I mean.
No, they look wonderful.
Yeah.
I know it exists and they look great.
But if you walk around and you pay attention to parking lots cracking, asphalt's not cheap. So if I had to redo or, they're, they're beyond, they're beyond sealing and repairing. They need to be redone. So that being redone and painting, I mean, that's just that, that's just parking lots. So it's everything from septic to parking lots, building to roof and everything in between.
Eat there.
Yeah. Little minor details that keep water from the tree. People cool and hot and what do they eat?
Okay, this is very informative.
Yeah.
So we, we really get into the weeds when we look at the individual schools. On the left hand side, you see the specific items that are identified and how we came up with that total. And then of course, on the right hand side of that same sheet, you're looking at several elementary. You get the same sort of breakdown as the recap sheet. It's just per se in an individual campus itself, so. I can, I can go and do a lot of detail of this stuff as she will. But we've done each school's in the same manner.
So I'm assuming when we had this done before and everything was listed with only receiving a million dollars a year, that we, a lot of these are the same issues that we had that have never been corrected, is that right now?
When I took the, I took the study from ten years ago, that was part of the beginning. And I went through the list and I scratched through things that I knew had been done. And then we provided that information to Jimmy Stephen at the beginning before they started doing their interviews walk-throughs. So there were a lot of things that haven't been done. But then those things have been done and then other things crumbled.
We have a lot of houses. I mean, that's, I mean, I almost look at this as, I think I have seventeen different complexes added and charged up in these buildings. And every, you know, I look at it as like the residential house, and we live in our houses and then we have the ten year, the twenty year mark. And it, it just, it's expansive and it's a lot. Matt does a great job of prioritizing what has to get done when, when we, you know, every time we have, you know, we can, if we patch it well and do it well.
Right, right.
It extends the lives.
But every storm, you have to start from scratch. You can't put a Band-Aid on it and it'll go on there, you have to do it right away. It's just like when you're saying that with our first home, if your, if your windows are leaking and every storm of water's coming in. You've got to do something, it's immediate. And so we'll, we'll do the same thing and do what we can with the money that, that we have and prioritize the replacements or repairs, whatever we can do. Unless any, anybody can think of any other solutions of, you know, I would just like to make sure that, that the county commissioners are aware of this report. We go over it in detail with them. Yeah, we're planning to do that next week and, and see what they say, get their, get their thoughts.
Will we have books available like this for them as well?
Well, we can, we can provide for any more.
I, I think that would probably be a good idea because the visual, I mean, for many of us, you know.
Yeah, right. It's not, it's really not meant to be.
Right, but this. But this is nice because they can study this, go through it and see exactly what our needs are.
I'm seeing tie-down spouts to underground drainage on several of their schools at the cost of a hundred thousand. Is that something we currently do not have?
Not at every school. If you walk around, like just the same way at elementary school, the new addition back at the library is you have the, the concrete splashboards. And there's erosion around a lot of our schools because the water just runs out around the foundation.
I see.
Governor, can I suggest that we have a chance to look at all this information here about what needs to be done at the sites? And then have a work session with Matt, or if we have specific questions, we can ask.
I can serve, I think that's a good idea.
A lot of good information, very thorough.
Just wish the numbers. One, two, thirty-eight thousand better.
This happens everywhere, yeah?
Well, I would.
This is the way it is everywhere.
I was like, I think we're not thirty-six thousand.
The Green, Loryon, Central, those are all, I mean, those schools are old. And I, I really was pleasantly surprised really that it wasn't larger.
Well, you, you picked the three schools, at least two of the three that I've been spending a lot of money.
Why?
Because of things that I noticed when I started. Jimmy, Jimmy will tell you that there were some things that they suggested that I said, it would be great, but we need to go ahead and cut those out of there. We, we carved thirty million dollars out. And, and there's no guarantee that we caught, we captured everything here, correct Jimmy? I mean, we did it the best we could, but there are always going to be things that break that we don't know about. If you look at an air conditioning system, like a chiller system, you've got the chiller, but inside every classroom, you've got blower motors and valves and actuators and things that we fix every day. Go ahead.
There is, is probably one other piece of information I did not go over. In the recap in each one of these, I've got one year inflation at five percent. Then to that, I've got another ten percent, which I call scope and market contingency.
Right.
The reason that that's in there is that scope is something that always increases when you repair something. When you start repairing something, you'll see something. So that's what the word scope is. That market contingency simply is there to recognize that market goes up in that one. And I would never bet on it at some point, although I've seen it go down, you know, two, three times in my career. But I would never bet on it coming back. So I got another ten percent there. And then of course, you got to get design and engineering, and that's, I put about it at seven percent. So that's one of those three items on the airport priority table.
I wanted to ask about the additions now. With, with the price of lumber going down, and I know when they quoted the additions and the prices at the top of the market with lumber. Is that adjusted? When, when, you know, that hasn't started yet, is the lumber figure?
The, the last, the last meeting that I had with them, they were still going to bid based on current numbers. And they were supposed to present the true numbers from Loryon Elementary School within the next couple of weeks. They had a meeting about it last week. So right now, the budget that they're still giving is based on the numbers that were current about a month ago. So I'm sure that, I'm hoping, and I'm sure that the county's going to probably mandate this, that the prices are coming down. It's reflected in our present, in our fees. It should, I hope so.
Jimmy, is that all you have for us? Thank you so much. You're all being very thorough and we appreciate all your hard work and everything that you put into the reports. Anybody have any other questions?
Before next week's meeting, how many copies of the study do you think Jimmy should bring? Ten, ten more. Give him ten more so we'll have.
That way the commissioners have them.
Commissioners, the assistant manager. That's God, plus one.
I think we can probably get it by Tuesday.
That'd be great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Renee Gaudy, she's going to update us on the attendance policy and the guidelines.
Hi, this seems super light here, I don't know what we just heard today. Again, following up from last meeting where we reviewed the attendance policy, there was a request to look at administrative guidelines to build some consistency across our makeup work policy for students. So what you have before you in your folders is a copy of those administrative guidelines in draft format. They have been shared with building level principals. And at this point with some staff members, we asked our principals to share with their leadership teams or department chairs to get feedback from teachers prior to moving on or making anything policy. I think it's a great idea to make sure that staff who have to implement and follow these administrative guidelines have some say and give us some feedback in that. So currently what we're looking at, again, I mentioned before, Ms. Jones always does her homework and notes that the Stagwarts Association has what they consider models of policies to look at. So this is one that we had seen previously in a different county and modified that. So this just lists it again, building consistency amongst our schools as what to expect for a student who misses school. And what to expect as far as the amount of time they have to make up work from those absences. Right now, current feedback is concern from our staff over what if they want to gain more time than this? They're concerning what we're hearing right now in preliminary feedback is a lot of our teachers and many of our teachers allow more than just this. You know, I spoke with Mrs. Allen, she'd probably be fine to speak up about that. But the expectation is they get it in, you know, and they turn it in. And sometimes it takes two days from a two-day absence and sometimes it takes a week. But their whole point is making sure the kid gets that work turned in and submitted. So right now, the concern is what, does that take away that autonomy from teachers to be able to extend the window past what's in this administrative guidelines? So that's what we're hearing right now currently with the feedback from staff members.
This is the policy for excused absences, correct? So I think we need the word excused in here somewhere. I don't know, I would, you know, I, I myself would say a minimum of like their, I don't, I'm, right off, right immediately, it's not coming to me where it would be a problem if the teacher gave them more time. But, I mean, this looks like fair amount of time.
Except for teacher popularity. If one teacher gives them, yeah.
This looks like adequate time to get the work done. So that was.
Well, if the, if the student doesn't get the work done in time, is that for the teacher to determine the grade now?
So that opens up another can of worms and one that we had some preliminary discussion on but didn't move forward with is then it becomes a late work policy. So is the board's interest in putting not just a makeup work policy, administrative guidelines in, but a late work policy?
I would recommend, so we, I'm a little offended, but I don't know, I think that is at the teacher's discretion, late work policy. That's different than makeup work, we don't have a formalized absence policy. That, that's my take on that, that, that we're going to get into. It's a pretty nebulous situation.
So I think at the end of the day, what's our intent? And how do these administrative guidelines, what's, what is it that you want accomplished?
The kids to learn.
And, and we feel like they, they learn best when they're there. But if they're not there, then we, we need something to ensure that they get adequate time to complete their makeup work.
So then the question is, do we feel like this is adequate time for students who miss work to have opportunity to complete their missed work?
I do. I mean, I guess.
Two days for the first absence for to complete assignments from two executive and I follow and think that.
Of course, you do have to take it into consideration, you know, they're missing four classes, that's four assignments. They're involved in every club there is and athletics or band or.
So a lot of times, and I talked with principals about this in our administrative meeting, a lot of times state policy sets a minimum expectation. And there can always be flexibility to have more than the minimum. So if it's the board's pleasure to put in this as well, that this is the minimum standard. That if a teacher decides that a student needs more time to complete, that they have that autonomy to decide that.
I'd like to hear from some of you guys.
Can I come in? I, I just want to say, to speak with you again, what concerns me about the whole excuse, unexcused, I just think about these parents that never like the excuse and. And when they're out there, I mean, everyone's going to be sure, you know, we know.
That's why I kind of asked about, are we, are we limiting this to only excuse?
And I just worry about that, like if he was.
Well, if we say it, they can't turn it in and they don't kind of credit, when we know, and most of the teachers will know, because they aren't so. They're going to follow through and do it.
Well, if we don't have something about excuse, then what worries me about that is a child who just says, I can miss twenty days, I'm not going to be able to make up my work. And I'm sure that would not be the norm, but we do want, and we, you know, if we had, maybe we need to go back to allowing them to miss ten days and having a business policy.
I, I think those are like the, the excuse language, closer to involve the high school students would. You have the discretion of parenting, turning a note. For out of the reality, it's high school teachers work with their kids to get what they. If you have a kid who blatantly skips class and goes off and says they're going to go surfing because the waves are up for two days. I'm not as a high school teacher really big on wanting to let that happen. There has to be consequences to their choice and their behavior. There, it, I hate to say it, but like there is that discretion still with that teacher's going to have that. To your point, to me, being a former high school teacher, I knew to skip my class and who didn't have a note to be excused. No one's following up. There, there's not like police, you're not checking to see, did you take that work? I mean, there's not a. I never worked for, I never principally that, that level of interest in, to learn to take the kids' work.
Do we have any data about absences that are high schools since the?
Since what year?
We have lots of data.
Right, well, we all missed a lot the last couple of years.
The last two and a half years, I, I would never feel confident talking about attendance over the last two and a half years.
And do we feel like this is, I mean, in my mind, to me, it's the high schools when they have to be, you know, they have to be starting to learn about accountability. And I know most, some of these high school students are, they're awesome, they're always going to do it, but. And I know most, some of these high school students are, they're awesome, they're always gonna do it, but just about making sure if you're out and it's excused, you still have to, you know, be accountable. So I mean, are we talking, is this more of a high school?
It is not, attendance is not a high school problem, it's a, it's a K-12 problem.
But we're just trying to make it a K-12 thing, cause it seems like, it, I, in my mind, it would be the high school where it's so important. But, cause it seems like, you know, and I, I mean, the problem with the younger kids, seems like teachers, or at least a lot of the good teachers at my, you know, I come across. They even help them, a lot of them are making it up in class too, before, you know, when they get back. So I mean, do you think it's more of a high school game, or you're saying it's across the board?
Attendance and absences is across the board. Our elementary teacher, uh, principals, you know, speak just as loudly as the high school folks do about attendance and, and a middle school. It's, it's a, it's a prob, it's a problem across the board, K-12. I don't know about makeup work, like if that is as much of a problem as I hear. And again, I don't, I don't know where it stemmed with Ms. Rose, you know, wanting to start that conversation about some consistency about that. If there is an issue in one area or another, nothing that's been brought to our attention has come from that. But, um, you know, again, consistency is a beautiful thing to say, like, this is the minimum expectation across the board. Teacher A and teacher B, regardless, high school, middle school, whatever, should at least offer the same number of days as the student's been absent to make up the work.
Yeah, that, that was my concern, that, you know, teacher A may give you three days and teacher B may say, I gotta get this done, I want this graded. You've got one day to get this in to me. So that was my concern, to make sure they had adequate time. But honestly, I think maybe three days would be better than two. I don't know, I'm just.
But just one thing. And I would like, is, we're always concerned about the students and, um, high school students that may be absent. The high school professors can talk for this. You might have a kid that's AG, they missed three days, they have to get that work done in half a day. You might have another student that is challenged, he might need five days. You might want to consider that too. Well, going back to my high school experience, I know if a kid doesn't get the work done on time, there were, back then, there were teachers that would give a kid a zero. Okay, you give a kid a zero, you know, you could have, you could have a hundred and two zeros and that averages out to a thirty-three. You know, so the kid's buried, you know, at that point, an AMF doesn't ever get up to a C. I think it goes back to the purpose of this whole thing, you know, but what is the purpose of it? Help the child, or is it do, what you were just talking about, give him a zero and then he's gonna be flunked.
I think the purpose is to ensure that they get adequate time to make up the work.
It's standardizing, we do not have a standard. I'm used to, so from me or my perspective and having worked in multiple districts, I'm used to one day out, one day to get it in. I think I like seeing this language, which was two days, a little more generous. Um, and with the thought of, of kids who tend to make up their work, their work are diligent and are a little, are concerned. We have a hard enough time, we want to get our kids to school, we want them to learn, do their work. And this kind of, this standardizes it to take Renee's language.
Maybe we should have a minimum of these days and, you know, for special situations, like you're saying, with children that need additional time would be at the teacher's discretion. But at least give them a minimum amount of time. So then you get it done and I just, you know, I think about the child that comes back and they're taking all AP classes or honors classes or whatever kind of classes that are challenging to them. Trying to get new assignments, old assignments.
So then I would recommend that we continue to solicit feedback from our teachers who are going to be charged with following these administrative guidelines. Um, and then we can talk about minimum language, the use of the word minimum, that this sets a minimum expectation. You may choose to get more time to complete these tasks, but at least every kid has this number of minimum days to complete. Um, and then we can also talk about, um, excused absences, using that language versus just absences in general, so.
I just want to throw my two cents, like, probably leads by, come from more, more, bigger counties. Um, we got away from the language of excuse and excuse is called unlawful, unlawful, based on types of criteria that are in power school. So we didn't have to play with excuse or excuse if it was either a lawful absence or it was unlawful absence. And we did two days for every one absence.
And lawful being the same as excused, pretty much?
Yes and no, lawful meaning it was one of the parameters that we had on there. Sickness, death in the family, it meets our lawful definition of a lawful absence.
Not surfing, is the way to start.
Definitely. Yeah, I'm more set here for talking about it.
Okay, Ms. Dowdy, I like that idea, let's, let's go with that and then, um, we can make a decision based on their input. All right, next meeting. Okay, thank you, anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about? All right.
Thanks, John.
Without anything else to discuss, I'd like to adjourn over to, thank you, thanks.